Good evening. I have at 7:15, we'll call this meeting to order. First up, electronic participation. Two point two dash thirty seven oh eight point three of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Supervisor Sarah Bonds, Supervisor April Demots, and Supervisor Steve Fidjikowski have requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Virginia meeting scheduled for Monday, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven fifteen to be physically held at the Government Center Christiansburg. The reason for this request is Supervisor Bond and Supervisor Demots are both out of town that prevents them from attending in person, and Supervisor Fidjikowski cannot attend in person due to a medical condition. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other Board members requesting to participate remotely. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spitz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Very good. At this time, I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Craig Meadows, if he'll lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you're able, please rise for a moment of silence, then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next are public hearings, and we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. Ms. Hopkins, welcome.
Thank you.
Look at you walking up there.
I can do short distances with no crutch.
Okay.
Very excited about that.
Easy enough.
Very excited. As you stated, we have a special use permit request by Ryan Hall, RDH LLC, for a short-term tourist rental in an R-two residential district. The star indicates the location of the property here on the map. It is in the northeastern portion of the property, just outside the town of Blacksburg. This is Harding Road, this is Lester's Gate, and this is Catawba to orient you. This is an aerial view of the property. It's outlined here in yellow. You can see there are two duplexes in front of this property. This red line is a private drive of Bunny Trail. It will not use Bunny Trail as an access. The access to this lot is actually through the property with the duplex units. This is your zoning map. It shows that this is zoned residential R-two as well as most of the properties surrounding it. So currently, there is a one-bedroom, seven hundred and sixty-eight-square-foot dwelling being built on the property. As you know, we amended the code in two thousand and twenty-two. If you have a short-term tourist rental, that means you are not residing on the property or adjacent, and in our residential districts, those do require a special use permit. We also added several supplemental regulations. These are basically kind of like conditions for short-term tourist rentals, but they don't have to be adopted with each SUP request. It is written in the ordinance that they have to follow these guidelines. This deals with occupants are based on the Health Department permit, fire codes, no signs on the property. It should still look like it's a single-family dwelling. Things like connection to a local phone services for emergency reasons that can be via cell or landline, outdoor burning, and where vehicles are parked. So these are the images from the site. This image here on the left, you're basically looking up the road from the access to the property, and that's looking towards Blacksburg. And then the picture on the right, you're standing in the driveway of the access, looking across the road to the property that's located across Harding. And then this one, you're looking to the right, and that's down towards Catawba, Lester's Gate. And then this is looking back towards the property. This is the access, and you can see the parking here on the side. Those are for the duplex units. This is actually up on the site. It does show the current construction in the area that they have graded. It is mostly a wooded site. The applicant has indicated he will also be planting more vegetative buffer around the area once the dwelling is completed. This is a rendering of the dwelling that's currently under construction. As stated, it is one-bedroom, seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Traffic impacts will remain minimal. We basically do not anticipate any more traffic than what would be for a single-family dwelling unit. Parking will be provided for two vehicles maximum. VDOT took no exception to the approval of the permit. They did note that there is not adequate site distance for this entrance. However, it was previously permitted with the limited site distance, and they feel like this does not increase the safety concerns that they would have. The dwelling is served by a private well and septic system for a one-bedroom, and it is surrounded by a natural wooded buffer. Noise should be minimal. The owner has stated he has other short-term rentals, and there will not be any parties or gatherings allowed at this location. Fire safety will be addressed during our permitting processes, and he does plan on installing a security camera so he can observe the property when needed. This is the comprehensive plan map. Again, it's shown in yellow. It's located in an area of residential transition. These are our comprehensive plan goals that we have identified. Planning and land use, basically, that it is in a residential transition area. It should be some type of residential-type use. Cultural resources and economic resources state to supporting the tourism-based industry in the area, which this does support. So for the analysis, the proposed use is in line with the intent of the short-term rental ordinance. The use does remain residential, and it's actually has less impact than some of the other byright uses such as a duplex. So the owner could put a duplex on this property and have two dwelling units. Provides lodging for transient guests, and the supplemental regulations do help lessen the impact to adjoining properties. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on September thirteenth. We had two individuals that spoke during the hearing noting concern that it was not in character with the surrounding area. One adjacent landowner actually spoke in support of the application, and then another adjacent landowner also had questions regarding the supplemental regulations and how those were enforced. We did answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. Occupancy shall be limited to two people per the VDH completion statement. The property shall be registered with the Commissioner of Revenue for meals and occupancy tax. Any permits must be obtained, and all requirements for short-term tourist rentals shall be met. Adjoining property owners were notified. Two public hearing signs were placed, one on Bunny Trail, even though that was not the access. We wanted to let those residents know as well, and then one at the driveway off of Harding. The legal ads were running the news messenger, and we have not had any additional inquiries other than those speakers at the public hearing for the Planning Commission. With that, I will take any questions you have for staff. I believe Mr. Hall may be here to answer any other questions you may have for the owner.
Thank you, Bree. We'll go around the room. Supervisor King?
No, I don't have no questions. I was at the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Bond?
I don't really have any questions. I do want to make a comment, though. There is Airbnb about a mile from here that seems to be running quite well. That's the only comment that I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
No questions.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions.
Vice Chair Biggs?
No questions.
Bree, I have no questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open up the public hearing. I do not have anyone sign up on the sign-up sheet that was out front, but if any citizen would like to comment on this, address the board, you have four minutes to do so. You can come now and state your name and your address. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Linda Majors. I'm twenty-six, twenty, Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I didn't realize this was going to be my time to say goodbye to Mr. Craig Meadows, but it is. I just want to say that my interaction over nine years with the county staff has just been stellar, and led by Mr. Meadows, who is always pleasant, always pleasant, always informative. He will be missed, but I believe that Ms. Hill will be a great replacement and wonderful. So I hope he has a wonderful retirement, and he's getting out just in time before the pipeline explodes. Anyway, I talked to Mr. Gary today, the Director of Emergency Services, and he is equally amazing. I am so happy that he's in that position. I feel he's an incredible pick for that. I'm very excited about talking with him and working with him, because I feel like that's going to be a great relationship, considering that we potentially might have need to do that. So I have some questions that I'm going to have to pare down and get to the county for the county to specifically get to MVP or VDOT or Norfolk Southern.
Excuse me, Ms. Majors. This is a public hearing for, this time to speak is on this short-term tourist rental.
Oh, no.
I apologize. So during public address, I think is when you want to...
Right, right, right. But that's okay. I can repeat it again next time.
So this is for the short-term tourist rental. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone come forward, we will close that public hearing. Next up, special use permit, Daryl Linkus Manufactured Homes.
As you stated, this is a request by Daryl Linkus to allow a manufactured home in an R-three zoning district. This property is located here in the southeastern portion of the county. You can see this is Allegheny Spring Road, Route eleven four sixty. It's actually located off of Kirk Hollow. This is the property in yellow. This is Briggs Road right through here, and it connects down to Kirk Hollow. And then this is the area of zoning. It is zoned residential R-two, I'm sorry, residential R-three. So currently, it is a vacant lot. This lot is zoned R-three residential and therefore would require a special use permit to allow manufactured home. There was previously a manufactured home on this property, so we had thought that maybe what had happened when it was rezoned to R-three, it was for manufactured housing, but we could not find that indication in any of the zoning records. And the previous manufactured home had been removed more than two years ago, therefore it lost its non-conforming status and would need a special use permit to be placed back. The Linkuses are interested in selling the property, and they would like to sell it with the ability to have that manufactured home on the property. It should be noted that the majority of homes in this residentially zoned area are also manufactured homes, whether they be single-wide or double-wide. So this is the image. You can see this road is Briggs Road. This is the access going up to the property. It does sit up higher than the road. And then this is, once you're on-site, there's like two level spots. There's one up here, and then this one down here. And you can see there is a single-wide in the distance that is on a neighboring property. This is looking up Briggs Road toward the cul-de-sac, which is right here, and then this is looking down Briggs Road toward Kirk Hollow. This is the site plan. The applicant did submit one. It was hand-drawn, and once we tried to project it, you could not really see what he had drawn on there. So we added the overlay so it would be more readable for those that are viewing this, especially on the screen. This is the proposal. This is the proposed location of the home and you can see this is Briggs with the cul-de-sac. This is the floor plan of the proposed unit. It is a three-bedroom unit. So traffic impacts will remain minimal given that it is basically a single-family dwelling. It will be accessed through an existing shared driveway with two other properties. Parking for two vehicles will be required and VDOT took no approval to the exception of the special use permit. The dwelling is served by public water and public sewer, so they will not need a well or a septic. And the lot did previously have a single-wide structure on it, so therefore minimal grading would be required. This is the comprehensive plan map. It is in the Shalsville Village and it's designated as medium-density residential. These are the goals of the plan. Basically, our village expansion areas are the opportunity to provide more density, whether it be residential, non-residential, or community uses. They should be village scaled. In the Shalsville Village Plan, it talks to a variety of dwelling types such as duplexes, triplexes, multifamily dwelling units, and single-family dwelling units. And then it states that the new development should complement the existing character, which this does given the number of other manufactured homes in the area. So the proposal to place a manufactured home on the property would provide a viable use for a vacant lot. It does align with the neighboring properties and furthermore, manufactured homes provide a more affordable alternative to our stick-built construction. The proposed use will generate limited impacts on surrounding properties, traffic, and the environment. The planning commission held a public hearing on September 13th. There were no speakers during that public hearing. And the planning commission did recommend approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. Only one Class A or B manufactured home shall be allowed on the property in association with this special use permit and all permits from the other agencies must be obtained. Adjoining property owners were notified. There was a public hearing sign placed on the property. We did run the legal ads. Staff has not received any inquiries regarding this request. And with that, I will take any questions for staff.
Thank you, Bree. We'll start off with Supervisor Demonts?
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Bone?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yeah, Bree, thank you for this presentation and I don't know if you mentioned it or not. Working off a telephone is a little bit different for me, but I think, isn't it true that down Jacob Drive, there are already manufactured homes on that road?
Yes, there are many in this area. There's a couple on Briggs Drive, but there's several down Jacob as well and Kirk Hollow.
Okay, that's what I thought. By looking at this aerial map, it looked like there's also some stick-built homes, too. Is that true?
Yes, there are a couple. It's kind of hard from the aerial to tell. Some of them look like they could be stick-built or double-wide, so we looked at a couple of them through the property records and we were kind of coming up with a mix of both. Some of them were manufactured housing double wides and some of them were the stick-built.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions.
Supervisor King?
No questions. That was at the planning commission meeting, too.
Vice Chair Biggs?
No questions. Thank you, Bree.
Bree, I have no questions either. At this time, we will open up this public hearing. This public hearing is to address the issues of the Darrell, of the special use permit, Darrell Linkus Allow a Manufacture Home in R3. I do not have anyone signed up, but if any citizen would like to come forward to speak on this public hearing, you have four minutes to do so. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that public hearing. Next one, special use permit, John and Stacy Lloyd Contractor Storage Yard.
So this is the special use permit request for Mr. and Mrs. Lloyd for Contractor Storage Yard. I have summarized this and can give you more details as needed, but you have had a public hearing on this already. This is a request for a storage yard. It is located here on the property shown in yellow, just off of Coalbank Hollow. This is South Jefferson Forest and this is a private road called Bat's Road. It is accessed off of South Jefferson Forest Lane through a deeded access easement because the topography does not allow access from Bat's Road to this portion of the property. The planning commission did recommend approval of the special use permit on August 9th. The board held a public hearing on August 28th and took no action, so we had to re-advertise the public hearing and that's why we're here tonight. Since that time, staff has received two additional pieces of correspondence since the public hearing on August 28th and I'll kind of summarize those. This is just to reorient you. This is the area that the Contractor Storage Yard would be allowed. This is the access off of South Jefferson Forest. Like I stated, this is a deeded access across another property. It also goes to a cemetery and you can vaguely see the fence in that left picture, upper left picture, around the cemetery. This is the concept plan. This kind of shows the area where the parking would be. This is a parking for three trucks and possibly attachments to those. It is a tree service. Employees would come in, pick up the work trucks, leave in the morning, come back with the trucks and the attachments and leave in their personal vehicles in the evening. This blue box right here is the area where the cemetery is and the owner has been keeping that open along with the access to make sure everyone can still get to the cemetery when needed. So the planning commission met August 9th. They recommended approval with additional conditions. Three members of the public spoke at that time. One was in favor, one had concerns, and one felt that the use did not align with the comp plan. These are the conditions that the planning commission recommended. I'll go over those briefly. Site plan should be in conformance to that that was submitted. And then a basic site plan addressing zoning conformance with landscaping, screening, parking, and et cetera would be approved prior to any county permits being issued. Typical hours of operation would be 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, Monday through Friday. No exterior lighting shall be installed on the property. The Contractor Storage Yard shall not be open to the public and create no exterior impacts, including noise, vibration, glare, odors, or electrical interference. Equipment and vehicles stored on the property shall be in good working condition at all times, so no inoperable equipment or vehicles. Equipment and vehicles shall be parked or stored outside of the access easement serving the cemetery at all times. That's to ensure everyone has access to the cemetery when desired. Any outdoor storage shall be screened from view of adjacent properties. There shall be no outdoor storage of materials on-site and storage on-site shall be limited to no more than three vehicles and three tow behind. Adjoining property owners were notified. Again, public hearing signs remained on the property and we did run the legal ads in the news messenger. Since your meeting on August 28th, we have received two correspondences. Those concerns were advertisement of the location of the property. We have confirmed with the county attorney that the advertisement is correct. When we advertise, we use the location of the entire parcel, not the specific area that the parking would be. So it doesn't actually, the advertisement itself does not refer to how the property is accessed. That's all done through the concept plan that's submitted by the applicant. Compatibility with the surrounding area in the comprehensive plan was a concern. Legal access from South Jefferson Forest Lane, we have received confirmation from the owner's attorney that they do have a legal deeded access and the right to use that. And then another concern stated was commercial traffic in this area that's mostly residential. With that, I will take any questions you have for me.
Very good. All right. Supervisor Bone?
So the last time that we saw this presentation, you had a slide that had a street view looking in so that you could see the pine trees that are already there that were blocking, you know, sort of screening what was going on in that lot. Do you have that same slide or no?
So it's a smaller picture. I'm not sure if this is the one you were referring to. I'm not sure if you can see it, but we do have this picture here showing the access and the trees. And then we also have the overhead that shows the amount of vegetation in the area.
Uh huh. But clearly, no pictures have been taken of this lot that don't have leaves on them. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. And at this point, is there enough vegetation, like pine trees, to completely screen the parcel so that people driving up the road, residents driving up the road, would not be distracted by anything that was parked there?
I do not know the ratio of deciduous to evergreen trees, but we could definitely look at that at the site plan process because they do have to do a tree inventory and tell us what is there so that a way we can make sure that the buffer is sufficient. At that time, we can always require additional evergreens to be planted if the board desires.
And can we ask them to, you know, I go back to the inert landfill down by Plum Creek?
Yes.
And the pine trees that were planted there were, according to our request, but they just weren't tall enough at the time of planting. Would it be something like that for this?
You could require evergreens to be planted. Normally, we do it spaced so many feet apart, staggered. The normal height that we require at planting for an evergreen is normally around six feet and I believe that's what our ordinance requires as well.
And do any, any SUPs that we've approved before or not approved before, to just wait for the evergreens to be tall enough so that they are pretty much fully screened? Have we ever done anything like that that you can recall?
We have not, no ma'am.
Okay. And then my last question is, can they put a gate on that drive, like a cow gate, whatever you call those things, the metal gates?
I don't know if they could put it right at the access since it is an access easement. So that gets into a legal question and also making sure everyone that has access to the cemetery can get to it.
Marty, is there a way to, do you know? I mean, a general resident probably could put up a gate like that. I mean, I'm thinking about Supolos, Bonamos on Lester's Gate. He's got one of those cattle, I mean, it's a nice one, right? But he has one of those gates. Could they put a gate like that on this driveway?
Well, it all depends like what Bree mentioned is access, legal access, because what they can't do is prevent people from accessing that cemetery. That's under state law. And so any gate they put up, you know, if that gate prohibited that, then it would, in effect violate that state law. So they'd have to have keys to that gate or, I mean, I don't know if you're talking about locking a gate. I'm not sure, you know, what you're thinking with the gate, but if there's other access rights in them.
Access to their equipment.
Right. I don't know. I mean, they can't, all I know is they can't block the cemetery and, Bree, you saying there's other access, property owners have other access to that?
I'm not sure. It's a deeded access easement. My concern with it being locked and it being a cemetery is how would you ever know who all needed a key to access the cemetery?
Right.
Well, it could be as easy as just having a keypad and, you know, and that's okay. I mean, I know no one's ever brought up a gate at this point, but I was just thinking about it and overall, you know, in the neighborhood that I live in, I surely wouldn't want a contractor storage yard, even at the beginning of our neighborhood. So I can understand how the residents, and I've gotten several calls outside of the ones that the county has gotten and as well as several emails outside of what the county has gotten, just being so disappointed that this is actually an opportunity. So at this point, I can't support it until perhaps, you know, when the leaves are down, we can see how screened the property will be so that you're not looking at equipment as you turn up your road kind of thing and understanding better about, you know, what access to the cemetery there is and, you know, everybody's afraid that the Contractor Storage Yard could, you know, I'm not saying have a gate, but not be as well-tapped up as a residence. Those homes are beautiful up there, you know? And so there is a lot of concern. So at this point in time, I will have to vote no for this. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
No questions.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions.
Supervisor King?
No questions.
Supervisor Demonts?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
No questions.
Bree, no questions. Thank you. At this time, we will open up the public hearing on the special use permit for the Contractor Storage Yard. I do have several citizens already signed up, so I'll call those names first and then give an opportunity for anyone that is not on the list to speak as well. The first name is Sylvia Wright. Ms. Wright, if you'll begin by giving us your address and you'll have four minutes to address the board.
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Wright and I live at 1220 Halfpenny Lane. This is in the second section of Preston Forest, which is where they're wanting to put the trucks. I've been here before numerous times, but a lot of you are new to me. The last time I was here, they wanted to put a pipeline through our sunroom, but I'm here tonight to ask you not to turn the cemetery at the end of Jefferson Forest Drive into a commercial parking lot. My husband, David, and I are concerned about creeping commercialism in our subdivision. Now, before we moved to Preston Forest, we lived in Blacksburg in a nice little subdivision and we lived there for quite a while, but in the process, we had single, all of the houses were single-family dwellings. And over the years, as the commercialism picked up in Blacksburg, that subdivision went downhill pretty fast and now it is no longer single-family dwelling and we had, we felt we had to move because it was no longer the beautiful little subdivision that we had moved into and loved. And we don't want this to happen to Preston Forest. A gentleman on the planning commission said that the area down where there, where the cemetery is, is a little bit sketchy anyhow. Well, if you put, because of the trash collection down there, now the trash collection was down there when all of us bought our lots, but, so we knew it was there. We didn't know this was going to go there. We don't want this to go in there because won't this make it even more commercial and more sketchy? Also, I wanted to say that one day last winter, or whenever they were up there, I did almost get hit by one of their trucks coming out of that lot fast. Now, I was able to stop, but we have buses that go in and out of that community two or three, four times a day. And what if the buses can't stop? So please don't allow this special use permit in Preston, in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Craig Elia. Next up, Craig Aliyah.
Aliyah gets killed all the time.
I apologize, sir. If you'll start off by giving us your address and you'll have four minutes, sir.
Sure. Excuse me, 1070 South Jefferson Forest Lane. I just have three things I want to hit to, there's three aspects of this that are important. There's a safety, there's the aesthetics, and then there's a precedent. The first one is the safety. As was mentioned previously, we have four buses that go up and down there. Two in the morning, two in the afternoon. Right about the time that those trucks would be coming in and out. It's got about a 3% grade coming down. And though it's not depicted on this map, that's actually a pretty blind corner as you come through. So it's already coming downhill as they're coming out in the morning when we have kids going up and down there. And then in the snow, it is almost impossible to stop coming down that road. So it is a significant safety issue as you have heavy equipment, excuse me, coming out while we have vehicles there. The aesthetics of this are pretty simple. Everyone keeps kind of ignoring a big thing. The sign that says Preston Forest, basically housing area, the trucks are right next to it. It's not hidden back unless you're going to plant trees in the cemetery. It's a big open area. It is clearly visible from the road. It is clearly visible coming and going through there. It is an absolute eyesore. And that can't be ignored. So there's safety, obviously, there's the aesthetics of it, which are terrible. And then there's the precedent. Whereas the other land use areas, you had had some commonality, right? You were building a house in an area that had other houses. It was how often, how frequently people were going to stay there. You had a home that was there while there were other mobile homes in the area. So they were like, there's nothing else like this here. And once you set a precedent that we're going to allow industrial storage in residential areas, now you have to go back and start justifying why you didn't approve a different one. So in other words, you approved this one. Now I go buy land someplace and want to store it right outside of another housing area. My lawsuit's going to be very simple when you tell me no, which is what's different? You approved one that was in the middle of it, that was at the very entrance of a residential area, next to a cemetery. And now you're not going to approve mine. So you set a precedent in there. And I think it's a bad precedent to set. Again, to address the question earlier, can it be seen? Absolutely. I mean, there's no, there is no missing those giant vehicles when you drive into the neighborhood. There's nothing even remotely blocking them. And there's no amount of trees, unless you're going to get rid of the cemetery, which clearly we're not, that you can use it to block that. So again, the three things I'd ask you to look at is the safety, the aesthetics, and the precedent. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up, John O'Connor.
Hello, my name's John O'Connor. I live off of Preston Forest on 1305 Rencourt. Preston Forest off of South Jefferson Lane. Supposedly VDOT has given their blessing. We were at the planning commission meeting. Not to diss VDOT, but only, you only need to ride through Price's Fort to see that little roundabout that they approved to call some of their opinions into question. The lot, in my opinion, I worked on a survey crews back in my much younger days that helped to survey some of Preston Forest. The lot that they own, has the access to Bat Road. Bat Road, I believe, actually goes through part of their lot. I believe down toward the bottom there is more than enough flat for them to clear a few trees, clear a little area, and park their vehicles in that area. Any trees and vegetation that they say will plant, and I don't believe there's any pine trees in that area right now that are big enough, except for that one big one next to our sign. Any trees, vegetation they're going to plant are probably, can take years to grow big enough to block those trucks. And a lot of us, a lot of our people will not be here at that point. Many of our residents will be long gone. The zoning uses are meant to keep incompatible uses separate. And in my opinion, OK, and has changed to allow this usage along a road built entirely for residential use, not to mention the quaint little cemetery, whose, well, the quaintness will be destroyed by this, would be incompatible and with the reasons why we have zoning in the first place. I do not believe, once again, that using Bat Road accesses out of the question for them. I think that needs to be looked into. It goes through the property and is flat enough to grade and clear an area for their parking. I also want to make a point that some of the folks who, from Preston Forest that appeared at the planning commission meeting who spoke, I believe neither one of them actually live on South Jefferson Road. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list. But if any citizen would like to come forward, they'll have four minutes to address the board. Start by giving your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Homer. I live at 222 Price Street in Blacksburg, which is near the site of the old Blacksburg High School. And when I moved there, I thought that it would continue to be a high school. It now is a Speedway. There are just all kinds of people zooming up and down our street. And they haven't even built the 100 townhouses that they're planning to build there yet. So, you know, you do the best you can when you buy your house, but there's no guarantee that it's going to be the way it is forever. But I am a customer of John Lloyd. He, this is a tree company. I have a lot of big trees around my house and I don't have air conditioning. I don't need air conditioning because I've got big trees. He takes good care of them. If there's anybody that could tell you what kind of trees would be on that lot and how they would work and everything, that would be John Lloyd. He is making it possible for us to have big trees, which is really important for our climate and for our environment. And if you think about the neighborhoods in Montgomery County that we appreciate the most, they have trees in them. We need people that take care of them. And I think we should do what we can to support this local business who's doing really important work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to come forward.
I'm the villain. I'm John Lloyd. Live at 1048 Opal Lane in Blacksburg. We have been in business here for almost 34 years. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. Bat's Road has a creek-type area runoff that's always flooded. There's no access through Bat's Road. We did get the deed right away from the property next to us. There are lots of pine trees there. Some of them are 10 to 15 foot, some of them are smaller. The trees that would be planted would be at least six foot as required. The trucks are not sketchy. They're all fairly new, they're all matching, they're all perfectly clean and white. And one of the things that I believe my lawyer had said on the first meeting was, starting at eight and leaving at 6:30, we're probably the only tree company in the world that works nine to five, Monday through Friday. So we show up at nine at the property. We talk, we go over the day's work schedule, and we're probably pulling out around 9:15, maybe 9:30 at the latest. I'm not sure when kids are in school, the bus issue. I think the kids might be in school by 9:30. I'm not sure. The gate, if we put a gate up there and have to pull up and pull over and stop to open a gate, it would cause incredible problems with traffic. The gate thing wouldn't work. So I think that's all I had to note here. But if anybody has any questions for me, you know?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Jeff Hamel. I just want to read part of, we live right to the north, wrapping around the property. I sent comments into Jude Cochran. And I don't know if everybody got them or not, but I want to read sections of them because I made some more today. So said several, initially on the 25th of July, "Several months ago, we noticed work trucks parked next to our only subdivision road entrance and our Preston Forest sign. Everyone who lives here and anyone who may contemplate buying a home here now passes by those trucks. They are visible. We believe the situation, if allowed to continue, will adversely affect our property values. Since the trucks arrived, we have also noticed significant noise." Again, I'm close by on my back deck. "So we frequently hear what we believe is a release of pressurized gas from tanks accompanied by generator or engine noises." I think that was at the end of the day. So something I started hearing from the deck. So then I'm just going to go on here to, earlier today, I made a comment and then another one. "If I were buying the same property for my business," I'm retired now, "I would hope that I would make a firm fixed price offer contingent on getting the rezoning required for the business." It seems, as was mentioned earlier, you're buying the property, using it for purposes not zoned for, and then asking for a waiver or whatever it's called legally. There's another property right next to this one and right next to us that just got sold twice this year. And I guess Danbury Limited or something owns it. I don't know what they're going to ask for. So we bought the home knowing the recycling center was at the bottom of the hill, knowing there's a cemetery there with our sign right there. It's all residential road. That's what it's always been used for. So I have a property value issue. The day that I can see, I can't today, if I can see trucks from my back deck, my value goes down 100 grand or more. It's just going to, because we have privacy right now, have a big lot. And one end of this lot still got trees on it. So that's a big deal for me, probably more than anybody. But it's also a big deal for everybody who lives up there. And probably missing something. But the other thing about the safety, I used to drive uphill, I drove uphill there one night. It's very steep and around the hill. And it was icy, like it gets sometimes. And then I stopped and then my car went back down the hill, all the way, back down the hill, past the cemetery, past the entrance. So at certain times of the year, and I don't know if it'll work then, so I'm not against people, it doesn't work. This type of business being there is going to have some risk issues, very risky issues. You cannot stop on that hill at certain times of the winter. The stop signs get taken out regularly in the winter because people's cars go through them. So when you're on that part of the slope, that's when you go by the little cemetery. So I just want to bring up all those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak on this matter?
My name is Valerie Reagan. I live at 940 South Jefferson Forest Lane. I just want to acknowledge a lot of what you've already heard. I also want to say to Mr. Lloyd, this is not about being against his business. We're very much, at least I'm very much supportive of local businesses and try to use them. However, in this case, I have a concern with the application that was submitted. And there is a comment in there that says substantial landscaping, which exists, would buffer the storage area. That's simply incorrect. I think you've heard that today already. The pictures that you saw, the trees are, there is not much foliage at the bottom, it's the foliage is at the top. It is now a time when the trees are well-leaved. I drove down the hill today and stopped and looked at that property on my way here. And it's crystal clear that you can see directly into there, you can see the gravel, you can see everything. And this is the time of year when the trees are, when the leaves are on the trees. So when the leaves come off the trees, you're going to be able to see it even more. First time I saw those trucks, I was rather surprised. I pulled into the neighborhood, was driving up the road. We'd actually been out of town for a while, so we missed the August meeting. And I saw trucks parked there and I thought, what in the world is that? Somebody's going to make them move pretty soon. I was really disappointed to find out that it was even considerate, being considered, that that could be a permanent part of our neighborhood. We've invested a lot in our home and our property up on South Jefferson Forest Lane. And a lot of the reasons that we bought there was because of the privacy and the scenery and just the environment there. To drive in, as I think our first speaker said, we've got a very nice Preston Forest sign right there and right next to it are trucks right now. And that just, as several people have said, I can't imagine that that wouldn't affect our property value somewhat. I also have concern about the precedent. That was another one of the things that were already raised. If this is approved as a commercial, what is it, a contractor's storage yard at the very entrance of a residential area, what happens next? And how could we expect more contractor's storage yards in our community or other similar communities? So I ask you to vote no for this, not in opposition to a local business, but because of the precedent and the impact it will have on our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, we will close this public hearing. Guidelines for public address. This is the board of supervisors' time to listen to citizens and your comments on issues deserving of our attention. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements and our comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use of profanity, abuse of language, or debate with the audience and address the supervisors. Just a reminder that this is our time to listen to you, we do not respond. And just a reminder that proper etiquette would be not to applaud or make any loud noises. First on the list is Irene Leach. I apologize if I mispronounced that name.
You got it right. I'm Irene Leach. I live at 4220 North Fork Road in Elliston, actually on the Aronto side. And I wanted to talk with you about the pipeline that we expect to go into service in a few months. For the last 10 years, I've been learning about pipelines because my family has property along where the Atlantic Coast was going. And then I live within the evacuation zone of the Mountain Valley Pipeline and see it every day. And I've gotten involved with organizations that are dealing with pipelines all over the country. And I've met people involved with them. And I'm really concerned about the safety. I know that there's a requirement that there be some provision of information on a regular basis to the community, that they're supposed to do things to help the emergency folks. But what I've been hearing from people who've experienced things has made me be very concerned. And the person who concerned me the most is a guy by the name of Demetrius Debray Burns. And he's from Sartartia, Mississippi. And the pipeline that they had trouble with happened to be carbon dioxide. When it broke, they thought that it was related to their water system. And it was 30 minutes before they got enough information from citizens who were calling in and somebody had passed out or something. And before they decided that it was actually what it was, they thought they were prepared. But when this happened, cars stopped. I met, this man was in a car that stopped running because of the air not having oxygen in it anymore. He and the other two men were knocked unconscious. When ultimately, some rescue people came, they had to break the glass and then drag them out. And they were limited in even what vehicles to use because they didn't know what was going on. There's a timeline about how that happened. I brought that article so that each of you could have that. But it's really clear to me that the county has to step up and look out for us. I don't know if you're familiar with the Pipeline Safety Trust, but that is an organization that can help provide information for localities. They're based in Washington State. Also, I wanted to point out that PHMSA is the government entity responsible. And as an example of how things go with them, after the explosion in San Bruno, California that resulted in the death of eight people, injuries of more than 60, Congress quickly passed a law saying that there needed to be changes. passed a law saying that there needed to be changes. It took 11 years for them to get through the regulatory process, and another year before they went into effect. Finally, this passed May, after something that happened that long ago.
Thank you. If you'll leave that with the board clerk for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, again, I apologize, is it Sean Gayner?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just have a concern. I wrote this down. I'm from Christiansburg, by the way. I live in Christiansburg, here in Christiansburg. Bull Teal was an honorable man with a kind spirit, just like his brother Lee, both pillars of the Auburn-Rhiner community. I can remember when I first met the brothers some 25 years ago upon my hire to the Auburn Strand. Very humble in speech and dress, but shining like the brightest stars when it comes to heart and contributions without strings to the community. I've witnessed firsthand on many occasions their giving to the schools of Auburn for the sole benefit of the students. Once again, we can all see their charitable works in the donation of the land to build the rescue department at the new, and the new rec fields for the Auburn community. Still under construction and yet a growing concern for us all. As we can see, the fields will benefit players of all ages. They will continue through high school for the girls' sports, but will stop once the boys are of age to move past 60-foot bases, which is 10U baseball. I can remember when I first started coaching baseball 25 years ago for Auburn High. We played some schools who couldn't hold a candle to our team. After many years of deflating the competition, I saw a change. These same teams that we once handled with ease now compete with us for not just district titles, but for the regional championships. What was the difference, you ask? It was with their recreational sports programs. The community came together, put forth their efforts, energies, and resources into their lower-age programs. Right now in the Auburn area, we have the high school softball field, motor mile field, the rec field at Auburn Elementary, and the Plum Creek Field. With four new fields being put in at the rescue squad location, this will make eight fields that can be used for softball, and seven for boys' baseball, up to 9U. Once the boys are past nine years of age, they will no longer have a local field to play and practice on until they reach high school-level play. And even then, it will just be one field located at Auburn High School. In 25 years of coaching ball and bat sports, I have seen that it's very easy to convert a baseball field using plugs in the dirt for safety and ease of moving bases, and a safety fence in the outfield to close the boundaries for girls' softball. Why are we not even considering making at least two of these fields at the Teal Field Complex, this type of convertible field? This will not just benefit the players of varying school ages, but will also draw more resources to the area with more competitions to be held at this location. I ask that you please address these concerns we've brought before you today, and to not put a roadblock in front of the community and the giving hearts of the Teal family. God bless, and thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you, sir. Toby Akers?
Good evening, board members. My name's Toby Akers, and I live on Huntington Lane in Blacksburg. I want to be clear that the views expressed here are my own and not on behalf of my employer. So I stand before you to advocate for a cause that's often overlooked, but it's of paramount importance to the safety and well-being of our communities: the reclassification of 911 telecommunications and the enhancement of their retirement benefits. When we think of heroes in public safety, we often picture police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical person, personnel rushing into the scenes of emergencies. However, there's another group of dedicated professionals who play a crucial role in the life-saving efforts, our 911 telecommunications. These individuals are the calm voices on the other end of the phone, and the lifeline to our field responders. They are the unsung heroes who provide crucial instructions, comfort, and reassurance to those facing unimaginable situations. Despite their pivotal role, 911 telecommunications are not classified as first responders in Virginia. This classification oversight must be corrected, and here's why. First, 911 telecommunications are the initial point of contact in emergency situations. They are the link between those in distress and the additional help they need. Their ability to remain composed under pressure, gather vital information, and dispatch the appropriate resources can mean the difference between life and death. Secondly, these dedicated professionals are exposed to trauma on a daily basis. They experience accidents, crime, and emergencies that most of us can only imagine. The emotional toll of this work is significant and can have long-lasting effects on their mental and emotional well-being. I want to take time to share small excerpts from my friend Ricardo Martinez's book, Imagine Listening: Your Worst Day Is Our Every Day. These stories take you into the nation's 911 centers and into the hearts and minds of those that answer the calls for help every day. You told me you were scared because the voices tell you to hurt yourself. I told you how strong you were, and that your life mattered to me. You called me your only friend. I am 911. You called and said you wanted to kill yourself. I asked if you had any weapons. Then I heard the gunshot. That was 20 years ago. I still hear that shot. I am 911. You didn't answer my status checks on the radio. I stayed calm, followed protocol, did my job, while your brothers in blue ran lights and sirens to you. I couldn't help but wonder how I could explain to our son that you were not coming home. 911 telecommunications' role extends beyond just answering calls. They often provide crucial guidance in administering CPR, controlling bleeding, and assisting in childbirth over the phone. Their actions directly impact patient outcomes and community safety. These dedicated professionals deserve a retirement package that recognizes their years of service and the emotional burden they bear. By agreeing to support the reclassification of 911 telecommunications and enhancing their retirement benefits in your legislative priorities, we not only acknowledge their crucial role, but also ensure the community receives the highest level of emergency assistance. Let us ensure that those who answer our calls in our darkest hours receive the recognition and support they truly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Farinoff?
Farinoff.
Farinoff.
Hi, I'm Jeff Farinoff, and I live in the Childess area of Montgomery County. Thank you. I wish to address the 2023 Board of Supervisor candidates and the Montgomery County voting constituents. I was grateful to attend the Board of Supervisor Candidates' Forum on September 14. It was very beneficial to observe and provide good insights to how candidates might solve county problems and where the governance lies. Candidates did their best to provide their insights, concerns, and potential solutions. It was, however, difficult to walk out of that meeting believing that we, Montgomery County residents, will be in good fiscally responsible hands with the new board we elect in November. It was disappointing to hear that five of the six Board of Supervisor candidates clearly state how dead-set they were against any tax incentives or vouchers to any parents of children choosing to use alternative schools that match their values better than the public schools. They were surprisingly glee and boastful about this. In the rest of the world, problems are identified and solved by competition and free-market solutions. But public educators believe they have the right to your tax money, to spend it at will, and you should not question it. Four of five school board candidates spoke the amazing mantra "public money for public use" over and over again during their forum. It was amazing how many times school board and Board of Supervisor candidates repeated this straw man. And another example, a question to the Board of Supervisor candidates involved: What can our county do to help solve climate change? To my shock and others in the audience, four of six liberal candidates jumped on adding solar generation panels into the county public works and schools as solutions without any mention to studying return-on-investment calculations. Other costly green ideas were also floated without any clarification on return-on-investments. As an engineer, clearly, solar panels have a valuable spate, place in our energy solutions, but they must be fiscal solutions to real problems with return-on-investment. Now here's a rub to us taxpayers. Five of these Board of Supervisor candidates are not willing to allocate one dime of money to a child in homeschooling, allowing money to follow the child, but are willing to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to tilt windmills with climate change without any return-on-investment or fiscal responsibility. It's all about the children ends and equity ends when you want to use your school tax dollars for educating your child with your consistent values. No competition, no free-market capitalist solutions accepted to improve the school systems. You have no right to ask, and shame on you for even thinking this. It's the attitude of aggressive school board and Board of Supervisor candidates. But let's throw money at climate change. No equity there. Montgomery County constituents, this cute expression, "public money for public use," is simply a straw man you need to be aware of. It is your tax dollars, and one day it should follow your child. If it really is all about the children and equity, why do your values for your child not matter enough? Clearly, we must fund our government and institutions, and we do so with good faith and watchful eyes where possible. The Board of Supervisors is here to help that effort, but still, we voters must be watchful. We do not want to build a mini-Washington, DC mentality of spending and tax collection here in Montgomery County. Montgomery County constituents, you have some important voting to do this year. Thank you for the privilege to express this.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Bond?
Hello, Jamie Bond, 2263 Pilot Road, Christiansburg. I would like to start off with saying I agree and applaud the speaker that spoke before me about the parks going into Rhiner. How eloquent he spoke, and mine's not going to be near as nice. But thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm thrilled about the new parks coming to the Rhiner community. And although I don't know exact design, it seems the baseball and softball fields are limited to 60-foot. And I should say that none of them will expand to 90-foot from what I'm hearing and seeing. And that saddens me, because as our previous speaker spoke that anyone above 10U can't play on those fields. So I'm hoping, as tournament ball has taken off in our community, and what a great way to bring people into our community, to keep kids moving, playing sports, not to say with an outstanding Auburn High School baseball team that we have state champions and runner-up state champions, and how proud of them we should be. I know and understand you make the best decisions and do the most cost-efficient possible for our county. I appreciate that. Appreciate everything you do. But let this be one of those decisions that we rethink, and look into how we can make at least one of those fields, something that can go to the 90-foot by putting the expansion pegs or the expansion anchors into the fields. And then we won't be waiting later saying, oh, we wish we had of. And we will have that field out there for our older students to be playing on. Thanks.
Anita Puckett?
Good evening. I'm Anita Puckett. I live at 306 Rucker Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I'm here, first of all, is to echo, first of all, I should echo Linda Major's comments earlier about Mr. Meadows, and strongly support those. We've had a chance to talk a couple of times, one-on-one, and we'll miss him, we'll miss you tremendously. Secondly, is Dr. Leach's comments are from what I'm bouncing off of. I had a chance to go to the Dialogue on Race a few weeks, a few Saturdays ago. And when I was there, I had the opportunity afterwards to talk to Mr. Milburn, Jason Milburn, who is the Montgomery County Emergency Services Coordinator. And he told me, we were talking about what are the needs should the Mountain Valley Pipeline have an explosion or something of that scope in the county? And what came up is what Mr. Akers just so eloquently talked about, which is the need to reclassify our emergency responders. Right now, they are classified as clerical, and there's a lot of benefits and compensation they cannot get. And we cannot apply for grants in order for them to get proper technologies to respond very quickly and fully to especially the kinds of major disasters that may happen under this pipeline. And so with that, I learned today in talking with Mr. Milburn that you all are considering that already. And so there's no point in my trying to urge you to do it, but what I would suggest is if we can be of help, please let us know. We'll be glad to do that. And that's all I had to say. Short. Thank you.
Amy Nelson?
Amy Nelson. I live at 1400 Valley View Drive in Blacksburg. And I'm here to talk about pipeline safety and our concerns in the community about how things are going to be if MVP comes online. So this is actually a tale of three friends, two counties, and two pipelines, and also the emergency services. And so I was really, I'm grateful that Mr. Milburn is here today, and just want to say from the outset, I totally support the idea of upgrading and giving the 911 staff the recognition and benefits they, they deserve, given what they have to deal with every day. Anyway, on August 30th in the evening, my friend Crystal and I were in Blacksburg catching up, and another friend called Crystal and said that he was at the Dollar General on 460 across from Cove Hollow because there was a tremendous smell of gas further up Cove Hollow, along the part that goes up the valley, sort of the 7300 block. And we knew that they'd been working on the East Tennessee Pipeline, so the, East Tennessee, for those of you who don't spend as much time as I do in the weeds of pipelines locally, is a 10-inch pipeline that MVP is going to cross. It's been in service for 70 years. It's only 10 inches. It generally hasn't given any problems, but they have been work, have been working on it. We'd noticed that there was a chunk that had been, they'd excavated out, they'd installed this valve. There, it was just kind of, something was going on there, and we weren't really sure what. In any case, this friend calls Crystal and says, you know, I just drove out of the neighborhood, and it really, it smells terribly like gas, and I don't know who to call. Like, you know, do we call the pipeline? Do we call, like, who do we call? And I was like, I think we call emergency services. So because the friend who was calling doesn't get cell phone service where he lives, which is further back up the, up the valley, and because MVP has cut, had cut service to his landline, not once, not twice, but three times that week, he wasn't going to go back home to make this call, right? He's sitting in the Dollar General where he can get cell service. So we kept him on the phone with Crystal, and I called, I started with Montgomery County Emergency Services, explained the situation. And I guess what I thought was going to happen is that they would say, hey, we're, that sounds bad. We're on our way. But instead, we got into a long discussion about whether the gas leak, the smell of gas, was in Roanoke County or Montgomery County, because Cove is actually, one side is in Montgomery County and the other side's in Roanoke County right there, which I understand, and I explained the, the part of the pipeline, the pipe that would have been leaking is definitely in Montgomery County, and I explained that. But we just went kind of round and round, and I was starting to get really sort of frustrated. And eventually, the dispatcher said, well, I'm just going to put you through to Roanoke County, because those kids ride a bus to Roan, Roanoke County is the bus that goes back there, so I'm putting you through to Roanoke County. I was like, okay, fine. So I got paps through to Roanoke County, went through the whole, the whole thing. They sort of seemed to think it was Montgomery County. I was starting to get really kind of frustrated. And eventually, the guy says, I just need your name. And I said, okay, well, here's my name, but I'm not the person, I don't, I'm in Blacksburg. This is happening. I don't care, ma'am. Just give me your name and your phone number. I gave him my name, my phone number, and he hung up on me. So the three of us, Crystal and I and our friend, were like, oh, my gosh, what's, what just happened? Like, that's, this is not good. And we're just trying to figure out what our next move was. And then the emergency vehicles did, did come. So Roanoke County-
Thank you, ma'am.
-sent out the emergency vehicles. But I would just like you all to think about how these things need to be coordinated, and how when someone calls and says they smell gas, there doesn't need to be a debate about which county it's in, but send the help first, figure out-
Thank you, ma'am.
-which side it's in later.
Time's up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the list, but if any citizens would like to come forward to address the board on any matters, they may do so. I think we've got, okay. Ms. Majors, come.
Linda Major?
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road. I want to say that there are some pipeline issues that need to be addressed. And one, again, I want to bench it on Mount Tabor Road, is Main Line Valve 26. They need to turn off the valves when there's an explosion so that they just burn the gas between the valves rather than 100 miles of gas. The valves are like 30 miles apart. Problem is with Main Line Valve 26 is that nobody has cell service down there. So I don't know how they're going to communicate with the valve to shut it off, and we don't know, you know, I don't know that there's going to be a little man that does that. So those are questions that I'm going to follow up with, with the county on. And I also want to say again that I really appreciate living in Montgomery County because I think we're all trying. And I'm going to now segue to something totally different. Jamie Bond was just up here, I know she's on the school board, and I know she's always been supportive of athletics, which I think is really important. And we, like for Blacksburg High School, consider it important. And there are a lot of students that would, you know, try to go for scholarships and play Division One or Division Three soccer, baseball, whatever. So those coaches would be very important commodities. And I think at Blacksburg High School, like with Shelley Blumenthal, who's been there forever, I think that we in Blacksburg are assuming that we will always have that. But yet, the coaches aren't compensated like people that are expected to do, you know, field maintenance, as well as coaching to win, as well as being mental health counselors for the children. And that's a serious issue. And if you had all those jobs separately, you'd be paying well for that. At this point in time, like head coaches get like $2,800 for five months because you're doing preseason planning and all that. I know you're not the school board, but you are the county, and you have the money. But I think that there certainly needs to be start of a conversation because there's expectations in this county of performance levels and the importance of sports. And we are expecting that we just do a Hail Mary and somehow we get a coach, even though we don't pay for it. And, and as a coach, you're expected to be there at 3:00 PM, so how can you have a regular job? If you don't have a regular job and you're an independent contractor, how do you have the mental space to find more jobs, you know, while you're trying to give all this energy to the kids and to the sport? So I just wanted to bring that up for your consideration, just so it's out there. And hopefully, you will hear more from my son, or the board will, at some point in time, because I think it's an important issue that hasn't ripened yet.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward to address the board?
Eric Altizer, 5333 Piney Woods Road in Reiner. At last, topic's not the one I was coming to talk about, but I have coached for over 30 years in a lot of baseball and fixing the field, so I really liked the idea of that conversation getting started. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you. There are a few points in support of including a regulation baseball field at the Teal Fields Complex that I would like to make. First, the field could serve as a home for the AMS baseball team. In the last six or seven years, one of the obstacles of having a middle school team have been having a field to practice and play on. I was AD at the middle school during some of those years, and it was just difficult to schedule any games because there was no field available. So they played all their games away or played double headers away. Two, with one of the fields being a regulation field, I believe there would still be six fields available in the Reiner District for softball and recreation baseball. Coach O mentioned Plum Creek, Auburn Elementary, Motor Mile, and the three new fields at the new complex. Three, a regular, regulation field could be used, if the rec department so desired, as a source of income. Travel teams and tournament organizers are frequently looking for a facility that is regulation size. Tournament organizers often use fields in Radford instead of being able to keep them in Montgomery County. Four, including a regulation field at this point demonstrates a long-term investment in the Reiner community. A regulation field being included at Teal Fields can benefit current and future generations of Reiner athletes and residents. To members of the board, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for considering including a regulation field at the Teal Fields Complex. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening, y'all. My name is Crystal Mello. I live at Poplar Hollow Road in Charlesville, Virginia. Tonight, I'm here to bring some concerns about the safety issues with the pipeline. I have three statements from folks that live within the pipeline that have given me permission to read their statements. One is from Tina Badger, whose family has lived here for over 100 years. My name is Tina Badger. I live at 4181 Bluebird Drive, Elliston. Thanks to Crystal for reading my statement. Many of you know me from years of trying to stop the Mountain Valley Pipeline because of concerns of environmental degradation and ultimately, safety. Now that we are faced with possible completion and service of the pipeline, I am still concerned with both issues, but ultimately with the safety of our community. We've already been out at risk by increased, I'm sorry, press more. We've already been out at risk by increased traffic on our rural roads, roads that are crumbling and becoming hazardous due to the increased traffic. But I want to know what plan our community has in place in the event of a rupture or subsequent explosion. We know it happens all too much, Streisberg, Appomattox, Sissonville, to name a few. And we need reassurances that our emergency services, response services are being trained to handle such an event. Are there evacuation routes in place? How will this information be distributed when compiled? Are hospitals ready to handle these events? We deserve to know that community safety is at the forefront of your thoughts. Thank you for listening. I have two more. This one is from Miriam. I'll get her last name, but she lives on Cove Hollow. I'm sorry that I cannot be present this evening. However, I do have concerns, as do many people who reside near the pipeline. I am concerned for medical issues in the future for our children and grandchildren due to corrosion of the pipeline in the future. Has this or will this be addressed? Two, since our road is one-way in and one-way out, there are, are there any discussions about evacuation if something happens, fire explosion, et cetera? Three, is there a number to contact for the pipeline if something out of the ordinary is noticed, or who do we contact, or do we contact the local authorities? Thank you for your time, Miriam Centimore. She's lived there for over 20 years. And then the next one is from, hi, I'm Angie Perry, and I'm a homeowner on Cove Hollow Road. I can't make it tonight as I raise my grandsons, and they have activities tonight preventing me from being there. Crystal has agreed to read my statement with my permission. I worry about my family's safety as this pipeline goes into service. I'm requesting there be some type of info given to the people living close to the pipeline. We would like to know who to call instead of 911. What is the plan if we need to evacuate as I live on a one-way in and out road? Is there a plan? Will there be a community meeting in the future to inform us? And I see my time is running out. But this, they're not, people aren't here tonight, but I want you to know that having conversations and knocking on doors with people, these are real concerns. Whether they show up here to speak in front of you and won't ever get to meet Craig Meadows, who I've heard great things about, and, and a lot of other folks, they, they're not going to come. Jobs, whatever, activities after school. But I'm telling you, this is a conversation that's being had along this pipeline route. And Steve, I hope you feel better, and you can be back soon. And if you want to go walk with me and talk to these people, you can hear it for yourself. This is a true concern to many people. And I encourage you to look up FEMSA and the recent notice of proposed safety order that they've issued-
Thank you, ma'am.
-that they've never done before in their life. Except for one other time in the 70s and 80s. This is a real concern of pipeline safety, y'all.
Is there anyone else that'd like to address the board?
Hi, my name's Georgia Deremus. I live at 1906 Shadow Lake Road in Blacksburg. I'm here with my eight-month-old daughter. It's way past bedtime, so I'm proud of her for doing so great. But I'm here for her, and I'm here for a lot of, for all the children in this community and the global community who are going to inherit the world that we're leaving them. So a lot of people brought up the pipeline safety concerns, and I, and I know that there's also a lot of people en route that are concerned that can't be here, like Crystal just mentioned. I have a few specific concerns that I want to bring up to the board. Many of you know that we no longer have the avenue of going through the EPA to have the environmental regulations. But the Mountain Valley Pipeline is required to do safety trainings in the communities where it goes through. I don't, I haven't seen any of that happening. I think we need more disaster preparedness going on. I'd like to see more public meetings. A lot of people that live on the route have no idea how damaging it could be if a leak or explosion were to happen. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Mountain Valley Pipeline has said that they're not going to put an odorant in the gas, unlike the Tennessee Pipeline that was mentioned earlier. If there were to be a leak, people would have no idea that it was happening until it was too late. So there's a lot of safety issues that are going on that I think need to be addressed. And y'all on the board here have an interesting role where you actually still have a platform to hold this corporation accountable. And so as a member of this community, I'm hoping that you can use that platform to really hold them to the fire, to do what they're required to do. In my opinion, I don't think that this community is prepared in the event of a disaster like this. In 2016, I was living in, in Oregon, in Hood River, and there was a train derailment that was carrying liquid natural gas, and the explosion was... I mean, it was like looking in hell. Luckily, there were no fatalities, but I will just say, people that live on the pipeline route, people that live in these blast zones, you don't, nobody expects this is going to happen until it happens. And right now, in the case of the Mountain Valley Pipeline, the corporation has already said that they're already doing experiments. You know, they're, they're steeping, steep inclines that they've never laid pipe on before. They've already had lots of landslides. You, you know that the, a lot of the pipe has been sitting out for years. The coating has degraded. I think that we should get Mountain Valley Pipeline to replace all of the pipe that's been sitting out in the sun for the last three years. This board, you still have a voice in this, and so I would like to see y'all holding this corporation accountable for the community and for the larger community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address. Addendum?
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
The scheduled work session for this evening has been differ-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, wait.
I'm at 7:05.
Ma'am, one second, please.
Of course. Yeah. It's my right. Pay taxes. 7:05, Aaron Street, Blacksburg. Sorry, I was like running. So I was curious if everybody had seen the pipeline blast that happened a month or two ago off of 81 in Stanton? Yeah, it looks like we had been bombed, and that was a really small pipeline, very And I just wanted to say that. You know, I hate to like point fingers or something, but if a tragedy happened, like a spill and a massive fire, then like, like in Lahaina, you know, there's hundreds of people dead. It came out of nowhere, and that could happen here. We could have a fire rip through. You know, the coating on this pipeline is old, and it's not up to code, even according to 3M, the people who made the pipeline coating. The people along the route need to be informed of how to evacuate. They need to be shown how to shut off their own gas lines in case there's a fire ripping through the area. I'm wondering who would replace their homes if their homes got incinerated? I'm wondering who would pay the insurance claims if whole families died? I'm wondering what happens if Precision Pipeline or the Mountain Valley Pipeline decides to just go bankrupt and disappear if a tragedy happens? Who's going to be there? This has happened in the past in Appalachia, you guys should know that. Is information on emergencies going to be sent out over a certain radio channel? If so, which radio channel? Yeah. And let's see what else I got in here. Yeah, from what I've heard, the police that we've talked to and the fire department people honestly don't know how they would fight a fire so massive. And this is not to even suggest that, you know, like hopefully, nothing terrible happened, but it's literally a massive, incredibly long bomb, right? So people could destroy it, the earth moves. We do have earthquakes, even though it doesn't, we have calm mountains, but there are earthquakes here. Yeah, and water is one of our most precious resources. So if this pipeline spills and destroys water sources for thousands and thousands of people, what are y'all, we, everybody going to do about it? Yeah, and I just want you guys to feel the full weight of that responsibility and decision-making, and maybe talk to other people who are in positions of power to fully realize the gravity of the situation. We're at a scientific precipice where energy is becoming a lot more accessible with a lot less effort, and this pipeline is actually absolutely ludicrous. So, yeah, have a nice night.
Thank you. No addendum. The work session scheduled for tonight has been deferred to the October 10th Board of Supervisors meeting, and that is a Tuesday night because of the holiday. And we will take a 10-minute break. And we will take a 10-minute break. Okay, I think we're ready to begin again. All right. Items of consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
I'm here, Sarah. Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business. Special use permit. RDH LLC, short-term tourist rental.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Special use permit, Daryl Lincaus manufactured home.
Motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Special use permit, John and Stacy Lloyd Contractor Storage Yard. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
No.
No motion?
Marty, do we have to-
Was that no motion, or is that a motion to deny?
I'm certainly not making a motion. Do we have to do a motion to deny?
We have to take an action, yeah.
Okay, I, I will make a motion to put it on the floor so it can be discussed and voted on.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Now we'll open for discussion. Any discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Supervisor Bone.
Like many of the speakers, this is definitely not a reflection on the business owner. He is a fine, very fine, outstanding individual, community member, business owner. This is no reflection on his business. It has everything to do with the location, and other than the business, no one thinks that it's a good idea. There should be other locations in the county that would be more suitable than this. And as far as safety is concerned, I understand what VDOT said, but I also understand what the residents have said. I have had the problem with having ice on my road and going into the, going across, across, at a T-intersection, going into the ditch on the other side of the road during icy times, even though I had chains on my car. So, it is something that does happen, and, and also I believe that the shielding or the buffer, if anything like this were to go into a residential area, would have to be very substantial. And I think at this point in time, the proposal just isn't a good fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Do we even have a motion to approve or deny? Because I think the only motion was to put it on the table to discuss. So, we need a motion to either approve or deny, then vote on that.
Okay.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second to deny?
Second.
A motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and we're voting to deny.
Marty's making things difficult.
No. So, a yes would be a, would be approval to deny, or would be in support of denying.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes to deny.
Legislative priorities for 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion?
When you have a moment, I'd like to ask a question.
Supervisor Bone?
I sent an email earlier this, or later last week about the request for language for physicians and counselors to work over state boundaries similar to those that are able to do it from North Carolina. I was hoping that either Mr. McMahon or Mr. Meadows could speak to that as to why it's not included. Thank you.
I really can't add anything to that. I don't, I don't, I mean, I saw the email, but I don't, the board, I don't know, does, does the board want to add that? I mean, I don't know.
Supervisor Bone, I know you're out of town. I had sent a response earlier today that I know that's certainly a concern at the state level with, with some of the practices such as physicians, but I did not know, and I did not recall hearing from this board that that was something that they wanted to include in, in our local legislative priorities for the state. But we can certainly add it.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
You're talking about regular counselors, like, like-
Yeah, nowadays, a lot of counselors and some physicians still do practice over safe Zoom, and that just makes it easier for them to continue to counsel their patients and potentially get more business outside of the state because they don't have any limitations.
So, what would the wording be, or do we need to-
I'd like some more clarification on what wording, and what would it say?
So, just specifically, I'll give a specific example. A counselor acquaintance that I have told me that they cannot do business in North Carolina, but North Carolina counselors can do business and serve people in Virginia. I would just like to have the ability, have counselors and/or physicians to be able to do their business at least virtually over state line.
Well, that would beg the question as to whether North Carolina is okay with that. Or is that, or was she denied because of Virginia?
Denied because it's Virginia. It's totally Virginia. It does not have to do with, Virginia does not give the ability to do that. I mean, for me as a financial advisor, if I want to do business with somebody in New York State, I have to get a New York State license, which costs me X dollars. For a counselor to do business in New York State, it costs $400. Now, it's not a lot of money, but, you know, if North Carolina is doing it, and it's not costing very much money, if anything, to do business in Virginia, I think our counselors and physicians are at a disadvantage, and I'd like to get them at least a level playing field. And I realize it's not necessarily a county issue, but it is important that this message gets to the state legislature, General Assembly, with more than just their association's support. I think that it's worthwhile for us to support these professions because it's real in our county.
For clarification, you're asking for counselors in Virginia to be able to practice in a different state, or are you asking for other state counselors to be able to do business in Virginia?
Counselors in Virginia and physicians in Virginia- Counselors in Virginia and physicians in Virginia to be able to do business outside of the state.
Wouldn't that depend on that state's regulation and requirements?
It's certification, like, you'd have to know, like, are other states accepting a Virginia certification?
Reciprocal.
Or do you have to go through and be certified in that state, just like with a teacher or a lawyer or a doctor?
I'm wondering if, uh, I should, um, I apologize, I didn't realize, but it probably would be best if I had, um, maybe the language of the association, um, uh, of how they're going at the General Assembly to enable this to happen. Uh, it would be an easy or relatively easy thing to put into our legislative objective, uh, priorities. Um, could we have some kind of addendum, uh, at a later time? I'd hate to wait a whole year to get this in.
Like you're saying, like, if we pass what we have in front of us tonight, um...
Yes.
Would it be able to be amended at a later time? Is that what you're asking?
The board can take action anytime to add.
And the other thing too would be when we have our legislative dinner for having that or not, that would be another time that that could be brought up to those folks. But it would probably be better if you had some kind of work, you know, because we don't know and...
Yeah.
Right.
What, you know?
Well, Mr. Meadows answered my question. I'm happy to just table it at this moment, get the language, communicate with all of you to see if we can put it in at a later time perhaps? Are people open to that?
Probably not table it. We probably would vote on today's, on the legislative priorities that are current in front of us.
Yeah, I agree.
And then at a later date, after we have the language and a little bit more clarification, um, on that, if the board so desired to amend it or add that as part of our legislative discussion and priorities for when we meet with our legislative dinners and, and of course, by the time, we'd have time to work on that before we go to Richmond in January or February.
I'm okay with that. I appreciate, um, us talking through it at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Um, I would just like, um, before we vote, just to, I'm glad that we were able to include the, um, 9/11 dispatchers that Mr. Akers had brought up to our attention through emails and then again tonight. I think that's great that we have that in there.
I would also echo Vice Chair Biggs. Dispatchers, it's kind of, if you look ahead or people have seen the agenda, later on tonight, we're going to vote on a proclamation for First Responders Day. And in that proclamation, we say, "We recognize first responders, including our 911 emergency dispatchers." So I do believe and, um, very supportive of, literally, our 911 dispatchers are literally the first ones that answer that call. They are the first responders. Um, and so, um, and they're, you know, last year interviewing and, and asking questions of our 911 dispatchers, Deborah O'Brien explained to us and how that they've been for years trying to get this passed and changed in the General Assembly for reclassification. So, um, I'm very glad to see this to be added. I'm also very proud and glad to have line of duty for our private police officers to be added upon this priority list as well. Um, you guys can remember earlier this year, Christopher Wagner lost his life, Wintergreen Police Officer that was killed in the line of duty. Currently, because he is a private police officer, even though the police department is fully accredited, he would not receive line, his family would not receive line of duty benefits. And for us, that is the Corollian Police Department in our jurisdiction that works hand in hand with our local law enforcements. They are sworn officers, fully accredited with full arrest powers within their jurisdiction, which, which would be the New River Valley Medical Center and all Corollian Clinic properties and facilities. Um, so I'm glad to see that added on to our priority list as well. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
No, and I need to state why. Um, there are 23 priorities on this list and I have support 22 of them. But as you know, I cannot support, um, public money going for school vouchers or tuition tax credits when I've advocated all this time that the state is not an equal partner in funding public education in the first place. So because of that one priority that's listed, I'm going to have to vote against the whole priority list. Although when I go to Richmond, I will lobby for the 22 things on there that I can support, just to make that clear to the public. So I'm voting no.
Mr. Mottz?
Um, I am also voting no and I agree completely with Vice Chair Biggs. Um, all of the reasons she stated are the exact same reasons that I have voted no. Thank you.
Ms. Bone?
Um, similar to Supervisor Biggs and Demottz, I do not agree with the voucher support for similar reasons. But I am going to vote yes for this legislative priority because I would like to include the language that I'm going to get my fellow supervisors to support the counselors and physicians. And this is a, uh, good faith gesture of, uh, of, uh, of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Hi, um, and I'd also like to say I'm glad we got the 911 dispatch service on there to upgrade their benefits. Um, I've done that job as a police officer. I was dispatch certified and I've done that job quite a bit. And it's a, it's a hectic, nerve-wracking job and I appreciate everybody that does it.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Five ayes, two noes.
Next up, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October.
Motion.
Second.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
As a breast cancer advisor, aye. I mean, survivor rather, sorry.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Proclamation Community Planning Month for the, and that is the month of October.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank all of our community planners. Um, a whole lot goes into planning on regional, within the county and regional and state level, and we want to recognize them for their, their, um, service.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
National First Responders Day for October the 28th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? And again, on that proclamation, it says include 911 operators and dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical service technicians, search and rescue teams, and other roles in the public safety sector, both professional and volunteer. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
National Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through the 14th.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Recognition, Mr. Craig, Craig Meadows County Administrator Retirement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, a whole lot.
Supervisor King?
Now, I just, just want to say I appreciate all you've done for the citizens of this county and for me personally. And you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
But we live close to each other.
We do. We know each other. Anytime. Still got 30-some days to go, so it's coming up.
He's still here till Halloween.
Supervisors, any further discussion or comments?
I would just like to say that Mr. Meadows has made me feel at home ever since the first day I got here. And I, I said this, I don't know if I said it in the board meeting or not, but when I was elected, the very next day after November, whatever it was that year, that elections, I was out picking up signs and, and my phone rang and it was Mr. Meadows. He was the first one to call me and congratulate me and welcome me in. And he's been nothing but just great to work with and, uh, work for, actually, but anyway. Um, thank you very much.
Mr. Meadows, I also want to say, um, we are very blessed in this community to have your leadership. You've served with great integrity. You've been the calm in the storm and even though challenges, and it has been a pleasure. Um, thank goodness you are a godsend when I first got elected and even before as a candidate, always helpful and you come, you are well-respected and you are a true champion of Montgomery County and the New River Valley. And you will be sorely missed, but we have you on speed dial.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not, I'll be around. Thank you so much.
Well, I would like to add that we really need to, uh, thank the board 14 years ago, which I had the privilege of being part of when we hired Mr. Meadows because their vision and foresight really did pay off when we hired Mr. Meadows to be the county administrator. It's hard to believe it was 14 years ago, but, um...
Had a lot of conversations with Chair Perkins on the phone.
Yeah.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
I'm banking. Yeah, aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Demottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Heck, yeah.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, we have, we, we're going to get real emotional when it comes to the, your last day, so it's coming. Been a blessing. County Attorney.
Uh, the only report, I, we, we actually had a pool in the office. It was debating whether the board would approve or not approve that resolution. Most of us thought you would. There were a few outliers, but, um...
We still haven't seen the budget, though.
True, yeah. But, uh, congratulations, Craig.
It's in price.
I'm jealous where you're sitting right now.
County Administrator, Mr. Meadows.
I have nothing to add tonight. Uh, I, I will be here for both the October meetings and, um, so thankful that, um, you've selected Angie as my successor. She's going to do a fabulous job. Artie is picking up many of the activities and tasks. And Chris Lawrence is a great addition to our staff as well from Blacksburg. Mark Verniel has not been too upset with me, um, but we're glad to be adding Chris. And, um, because Chris is starting on October 16th, uh, the week of October 9th, I will be vacating my office so the transition can take place. So if you've got a chair and a, and a desk somewhere, just let me know. I'll be floating around for about two weeks. But, uh, I'm excited. Thank you all so much.
Board reports. Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Uh, I just want to say I hope this is the first and last time that I attend a meeting in my pajamas. Because that's the only thing I can get on.
Well, at least you weren't on Zoom.
That's right. Very, very, very observant, yes. So I have no report.
Supervisor Bone?
I would like to echo, um, all the accolades, uh, towards Craig and what he's been able to accomplish, uh, since he's been here. I can remember, um, meeting him early in his tenure, um, you know, with lots going on, meaning the Blacksburg High School roof collapsing and him coming in soon thereafter and all the other shakeups, including COVID. Um, the leadership that he's been able to provide for this county has been, um, a godsend. And we wish you all the best every day of your retirement and hope that, um, you continue to be blessed beyond, uh, expectations. Um, thank you, Craig. I do want to ask the administration if, um, and what our plans are to, um, inform the pipeline, uh, surrounding residents, the public, um, our safety plans and coordinations and stuff like that. Um, if we could have something like that on the agenda moving forward just to start making that as public as possible so that there, the confusion is minimized and, uh, the community, um, can get the answers that they're looking for. So hopefully, um, we can put that on our agenda sometime soon. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Demottz?
Um, just two items and I'll start first, um, very simply by saying to Craig, um, that I have learned so much from watching you as a leader. I have learned so much about leadership myself. Um, and your service to the citizens of Montgomery County and your service to this board has been, um, just absolutely without, um, without any flaws. You have done such a wonderful job for our community. Thank you so much for everything. Um, the second item is somewhat of a commercial, but also a bit of a brag on, uh, the organization Live, Work, Eat, Grow. Uh, this is an organization that was born out of the old Prices Fork Elementary School project. It's a nonprofit that was formed to support the community kitchen there. Um, their mission is to cultivate vibrant communities by fostering local food, farms and gardens, creating jobs and growing small businesses and supporting an affordable home for all. Um, Elwag has received funding to expand the community garden program to 60,000 square feet of space in the community garden. And I know it's not vacant, uh, but they have recently won a Virginia Municipal League Innovation Award in the category of community health, uh, for their community car, garden program. So I just wanted to highlight that and extend my congratulations, um, to that organization because it's a great program, um, that helps a lot of people in the community have access to fresh, locally grown, um, food and also the ability to grow it themselves. So wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but a, uh, Mr. Dwayne Hale wanted me to, uh, let all the board members know that he was really interested in a official-sized baseball field in Riner. He said he's sorry he couldn't be here, but he had to work.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Another report.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Um, I was only going to, well, echo what Sarah said about, you know, getting some information together for, um, about the pipeline and the safety issues. You know, that's been something that's been talked about for a while. Um, I just wanted to report that Chairble Evans and I, um, were able to attend the First Steps 30 Annual Early Childhood Champion Awards last Friday. And, um, it, it's, it's the organization, they try to recognize childcare workers and also they were providing training for them after the breakfast. But one of the things that I think we really need to, uh, to think about for the future, um, and I brought this up, I guess, at the supervisors forum. Childcare, quality childcare is something that is very much needed. Um, it affects our children, our families, our workforce. It affects economic development and the quality of life. And one of the things that is happening right now, the ARPA funds that Blacksburg specifically, um, gave, I think that was helping some of the childcare centers. But what's happening is... centers, but what's happening is we still aren't paying the people enough money to take care of the children, and at the same time, the cost of childcare is so expensive to parents. So if you're in the middle and you're trying to run a center, you're trying to be cost-effective, you're trying to pay your workers, you're trying to keep the cost, you know, so that folks can pay, and it's just really not a sustainable thing when you look at it, and there are vacant rooms right now within childcare centers in Montgomery County where they have rooms, but they have no teachers. And so as we move forward, it's something that, you know, I think is going to become sort of more of maybe a challenge, but of course with challenge comes opportunities. Um, so I just wanted to sort of put that on everyone's radar, and I was really glad that Chair Blevins and I were able to attend that event, and that's it.
Absolutely, and thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. It was, um, a great, um, eve, uh, morning to recognize and honor our childcare professionals and basically, um, if you have a young child, you know that, uh, having affordable quality childcare, um, early education is essential. Work simply doesn't work if you don't have childcare, and if you don't have, um, affordable and quality childcare, that's, you know, that is a, a challenge for a lot of families. So I was very proud that we were there to support and honor the, the, um, awardees. Just several, a couple other things. Um, first of all, wanted to congratulate the Rotary Club of Montgomery County and Mr. Meadows, who is a member there, and he was serving the community on Saturday, serving up pancake, pancakes, and John Tuttle was flipping pancakes. Let me tell you, I had, I had to see it for myself to make sure that man could cook, and he can. Um, but they did a great job, and that was a fundraiser for Coats for Kids, so we do, again, all of these, we are so fortunate to have, live in an area where people come together for great causes and to make a real positive difference in our community. Again, uh, um, I wanted to remind folks of, um, and thank Montgomery County, the board, and Montgomery County Public Schools for their collaboration and partnerships, and Michael Greary from, um, our emergency, Montgomery County Emergency Coordinator, um, will be emceeing the safety presentations that will start, the, um, safety seminars, community safety seminars that will start this week. So each of the high schools will offer a program, and the topics will be, um, just as the pandemic has shown and the uptick in all kinds of, of social issues, from social media dangers with our police officers, professionals being a panel, uh, being panelists, vaping issues, drug awareness and drug use with New River Valley Health Department, school bullying, we'll have our school counselors there. This is just an educational program to make sure our community is aware of all the dangers and risk and the ways that we can help and the resources particularly for parents, um, mental health, and, um, just wanted, this has been something that the Montgomery County Public Schools asked for help back during the pandemic at a Greater Montgomery Laizant Meeting, and, um, we're very fortunate to have such professional, um, panelists that can come, and the whole concept, our idea is to make sure the community is aware of the resources, aware of the dangers out there, especially in our school systems with our young, um, young kids and young adults, and we are, um, the first one will be September the twenty-seventh, that's this Wednesday, at Christiansburg High School at six P M. September the twenty-eighth, it will be at Eastern Montgomery High School. October the second at Blacksburg High School, and October the nineteenth at Auburn High School, and, um, this is not just for parents, this is for the community to make sure that we're aware of the dangers and risks and, and know the educational resources that we have and that this community, the school board and this county comes together to support our community, um, in this very important safety seminars. Also wanted just to address and maybe we, for clarification, um, I've had about, we had numerous guest speakers today on the Reiner Park, and I've had probably about twenty emails this past week of people that, um, are wanting that regulation field that during our September eleventh meeting, I supported, and it was my understanding during that work session, uh, that we were going to get some more input, but that there was no decision made, so am I correct on that? Because some of the emails and some speakers tonight said they were disappointed to hear that we were not considering that or moving forward. I, for clarification, I thought this board had discussed that we wanted to do it right and to look at those options, since you described it as a generational opportunity, once, once in a lifetime, and we want to get it right instead of having to come back and spend more money.
Sure, I can try to clarify that. I know that, uh, we have not wanted to hold up foresight design with getting the information ready to bid. Now, they've continued to work on getting that, um, project out to bid. The bid, as it has been designed, includes four regulation fields. It does not include the larger field. However, we have let foresight know that the board may come back with different direction on that, and at the work session, uh, two weeks ago, it was my, in a conversation with the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission the previous week, I was of the impression that they were gonna hold a meeting that week. I don't think that meeting took pa, place, however, um, if the board's, this is a, this is a board project, and if the board feels that that is something that needs to be modified in the, uh, bid document before it goes out for bid, that can be addressed with the A&amp;E firm pretty quickly if the board says that's what you want to do.
I definitely support the larger field. I look at the vision for the, for Parks and Rec and, um, for the growth of that, and, and obviously we had so many speakers tonight and emails and, and people reaching out that that is something, and I know Supervisor King, you had had a que, you had a concern because it was gonna be a delay, but my understanding was it'd only be a six-week delay and the return to make sure we get it done right, I think is...
It was our understanding from the A&amp;E firm, it could be, it could delay getting the bid out for four to six weeks, but they've also been aware for at least three weeks now that this may be something that's coming, so...
Do we need a consensus?
If you look at, if you look at some of your emails, majority of them says Auburn Middle School Home Field. All right, some of them, some of the ones that contacted me and talked to me about it is, and I brought it up at our last meeting about the smaller field at the elementary school. It can be expanded to a full-size field, and some of them, it's talking to me saying, "Well, if we put the ball field down at the Reiner, oh, at the Till Park, how's our kids gonna get down there to practice? School's over at two, two-thirty, three o'clock, and we're at work." So some of them, and I've been in discussion with some of them out there, and I've been in discussion with school officials, and I told some of the people, well, one of them that contacted me today, you know, "We need to get together and see where it needs to be." Yep, and they're, and some of them's talking about, you know, a home field should be on the campus of the school, because some of the parents is saying, you know, "If the school's out at two-thirty-three o'clock and we're working, we can't get off work to go get our kids to take them to the field and then go back to work." And then somebody brought up that, uh, they haul the, uh, golf team to Auburn Hills for practice. Well, I reached out to them. What they do, if they have room for them on a regular route, it's not a special route, if they have room for them on that bus, they do let them ride, but they cannot carry no equipment with them. They can't carry golf clubs or anything.
Well, now, I know Blacksburg Middle School went through the same growing pains, and I, I don't know what they're doing now, but, uh, when they first started their baseball team, um, I was hauling them from the middle, from the middle school to the elementary school, that's the way they were doing it. But I just put the bags underneath. I mean, I hadn't put them under the, there's like luggage compartments under the bus, I mean, I don't see where that'd be a problem, but if you have room, and I'm, at the time, I had, I had enough room, but...
I don't know, I, I talked to the school side, and they said you ca, they cannot bring no equipment on the bus.
What was the discussion about the use of that field? Did we get an answer from the school system or the...
I haven't received anything formal from the school system. It was, there was a discussion about the one field that's at Auburn that had the potential to be expanded and lighted, and the concerns, the concerns from the school were that that field is immediately adjacent to some housing down there, and they were concerned that if the county and/or the schools put lights on that field that we may get com, comments, concerns, complaints from those residences, but that, that was an informal discussion. Nobody's formally asked or been told, so...
There, there's gonna be several meetings this coming week.
What, what, what would the board, what would the board need to do? Is that something that we would need just consensus or another work session or...
I think, I, I think if the board is s, serious about making a modification to that, um, bid that's getting ready to go out, you probably need to instruct staff to instruct the A&amp;E firm to hold off issuing that bid document until this is resolved, because otherwise it's, today's the twenty-fifth, I was under the impression it was going out before the end of the month, and so if that goes out, you can, I'll, let me say this to that, too, you can always issue a request for proposals and send out an addendum or an amendment to that. You know, that, that's the concern right now, is I know the A&amp;E firm's been working and we've been pushing them because we had a couple of other slowdowns during the summer with the, with the Fieldhouse facility and, uh, discussion that we, we need to get this out to bid so we can get it underway, but I also agree that if there's any thoughts about changing the size of one of those fields, that needs to be resolved soon, one way or the other.
Well, I support at least one of those fields being a larger field that ends, and as I understand, it could be used, still used for the younger, and then it could be modified and changed to use back and forth so it could be used. So I, I'm supportive of that.
Um, what was I gonna say? Todd, you were saying there's gonna be some meetings, or...
Well, I'm gonna meet with several people next week.
Okay. Um, and we don't know why Parks and Rec didn't meet?
Of course, I, I've not had any conversation with, with, with Ms. Miller.
There, there was never a called meeting for the Parks and Rec Commission. There was never going to be a meeting for the Parks and Rec Commission in September. There is a meeting in October.
And, and that's, that's what Ms. Miller had said to me as well, Supervisor Demots, is that the meeting for September had been postponed or canceled, but the last I had had a conversation with her, she was gonna reach out about that, but I never heard back.
We know, that's something that we need to talk, Parks and Rec Commission, too, because they've been working on this for five years.
I think Ms. Hopkins has some input, too. I don't know if she's still there, but, uh, um...
Who?
I don't know if there's enough room. Does anybody know if there's enough room?
Room in the proposed park? Is that the...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Could we actually...
Absolutely, there's enough, there's, there's room. It will need modifying, uh, mean some slight modifications, but the, the big issues related to a larger field is where the fencing is placed and where the lighting will be placed.
In addition to, uh, Supervisor Blevins, uh, I am totally in support of at least one field. I would like both fields because, uh, there's such a shortage of fields in our community. I don't see why we would want to, um, limit, uh, when there's the technology out there to actually make it functional for many different sizes.
Do you?
Yeah, I'm in support of going ahead and making a bigger field. I think we'd be dollars ahead in, in the future if we, if we at least did one of them.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yes, I also support a larger field in, uh, in the Reiner Park.
Supervisor Demots?
I think we ought to hear from the Parks and Rec Commission before we move forward with requesting a larger field.
Should we do that?
Vice Chair Biggs? When, when is the Supervisor Demots, when's that commission meeting?
Give me just one second, let me open my calendar.
I'm sorry, put you on the spot.
It's okay. The next Parks and Rec Commission will be held on Thursday, October the twelfth.
Oh, okay, that's soon.
That's coming up, okay.
So when were the bids supposed to go out?
My understanding is they've been working to get those documents out. I, the last I had heard is they were gonna be out by the end of the month, which is this week, but we can certainly ask them to hold that until they receive further direction from the board.
Members, does that sound, what we'd like to do is hold off until Parks and Rec have their, um, the commission have their meeting, then they could give us their recommendation, and then move forward, or do we have enough consensus to move forward?
I'm in favor.
I support reading.
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Moving forward, meaning going ahead with, uh, the, at least one larger, or for the bid to include one larger baseball field?
Yes.
I think I would be, too.
I, I'm prepared to move forward, uh, after having so many emails, calls and public speakers tonight. That way it doesn't delay the completion date any longer.
I was gonna say, we're gonna delay it another two or three weeks.
Well, we, we, would we still want to hear from the Parks and Rec about what they... I guess there was a reason that they didn't want it in the first place, or they didn't support it in the first place, but it's...
I don't think it was ever discussed, was it?
My understa, my understanding and Supervisor Demots, you may have more information on this as well. I think the, the concern when a larger field was talked about early on is there currently aren't any rec league teams that would have use of that field. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, that there are not currently any Parks and Recreation teams that would make use of that field. Um, we've heard from speakers and emails that the field could be made use of by Auburn Middle School and travel teams, but we do not have any Parks and Rec teams, uh, that could make use of the field.
Is that, has that been ever considered a vision for our Parks and Rec to expand, to offer those type of programs?
That program is currently offered.
Currently, currently offered, but there are no teams that have desired to sign up for that, is that my understanding?
Yes, that's the second part of that, yeah, is that it is an offer, but we don't have, sign up for it.
That's because it, if you build it, they will come.
Well, it is the field of dreams, the Evarian.
Yes, that's it.
But if you build it now and five years down the road or ten years down the road you need it, you'll, you'll have it, and it can be for either one, right?
Right.
I still support, I have to go on ahead, but...
Supervisor Bone?
I agree, I support, um, creating the, uh, flexibility to, for at least one field, but I would prefer a second.
So it does sound like, board, I have four consensus to move forward now?
With one or two?
With one field.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Any further discussion?
If that's the consensus, I can reach out to the A&amp;E firm tomorrow.
Sounds like the, what the board, board's desire.
Now, the way it is, there's two fields here, right? Two of the smaller fields. Now, the way it is, there's two fields here, right? Two of the smaller fields.
There'll be, there's four fields total proposed. Two, two will be on one side, smaller fields on the other side. And I'm being real generic. There'll be a small field, and one will be designed to be the larger field.
Now, there's two small fields side by side.
Yes, sir.
And then there's an all-purpose field.
Yes.
Then behind the firehouse, there's an all-purpose field.
Yes.
Then when you go down the, down and around, that's the other ball field.
That's where, yes. And that's where, when there's been discussion about making one of the two fields larger, that's where the larger field will be.
That's what I was going to say. If it's going to happen, it go back here, so it don't mess up the corn on these two.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding. And that, that's my understanding based on a discussion some weeks ago about if there were to be a larger field, where would it make sense to put it? And it would be, as you said, around the corner in the... I will confirm that.
And tell them that's where it goes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make another comment.
I'm sorry, did you say something?
Yes, I'd like to make another comment.
Yes.
I want to thank the community for contacting us about this concern, the many times that they have. It helps us do our job better. And can't thank them enough. Thank you.
Very good. All right. So Mr. Meadows, sounds like you've got some guidance and direction. The Reiner community will have one larger regulation field. Again, I'm not a baseball person, but they will have to be able to accommodate the older teams and younger teams as well.
Now, that, that will be, Parks and Rec goes first, right?
Yes, sir. That, that field will all, that entire complex will be for Parks and Recreation, and any use beyond rec league teams would have to be approved through the Parks and Rec.
Well, I'd like to see us work with the schools, because that's middle school. Or maybe we can work with the schools and upgrade the other field, too.
That might be a possibility.
I got to meet with them next week.
All right.
Very good. So for all, again, thank you to all the citizens that have reached out to us. Reiner will get that larger baseball field. With that being said, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.